It's five o'clock.
It's five o'clock somewhere.
We'll go ahead and get started and call this meeting to order. Today's date is October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and this is a TELCITY special common council meeting. If everybody could please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. Okay. First item, we have adoption of the agenda. I do not have any additions or changes to the agenda. Counsel, do you have any?
Motion to adopt is presented.
Okay, motion made by John to adopt. Is there a second?
I'll second it there.
Seconded by Gary. All is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the blight clearance. We have Indiana Region fifteen here. Ms. Leah Hawkins to kind of brief us on what we need to do and what this means. So Leah, I'll let you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm Leah Hawkins from Indiana fifteen. The City of TELCITY plans to submit an application to the Indiana Office of Community Rural Affairs for a grant from the state community development block grant, like clearance program. This program is funded by Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four. These funds will be used for a community development project that will fund a grants project of the former Perry County Memorial Hospital located at One Hospital Road in TELCITY. Oprah requires two public hearings, one prior to the proposal and one prior to the application supplemental. Public hearings allow for residents an opportunity to express their views on the project or any other project funded with community development block grant funds. I will be taking minutes and recording everyone's comments. The minutes of the hearing and a sign in chief that I will pass around in a minute will be included in the application. The comments help boost the application as well. They want to see that the community has been involved in the process. They want to know your thoughts and opinions. So if you do have a thought or opinion today, please do state your name beforehand and just speak clearly.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Leah. So at this time, what I would ask, and you don't have to, don't be shy. If you'd like to make a comment about the city's being involved in pursuing a grant to demolish and clear the old hospital site, either for it or against it, or think it's a good idea or a bad idea, or why or why not, it's very helpful if you do come up and say something because those comments can go in our application and as they score and grade the applications, they'll look at those comments. So the more comments you have, maybe the better. May not be, that may not be the other way too, but they want to see public comments and all of us in this room are citizens, including the council member and the city attorney and clerk and everybody out there. So if you would like to make a comment, if you could stand up and come to the microphone, it'd be great. If you want to sit at your seat, I'll allow that tonight normally too, but I just want to be comfortable and so who wants to go first? You're all citizens now. Don't be shy. We need comments, so don't hurt.
I'll go first.
You'll break. Okay, good. Larry, thank you.
I'll just read a letter or prepare. Actually, this is the same letter that I've read at the last public hearing. I'll just update the date and I'll get a signed copy to you, to Janice, before the application goes in. The former Perry County Memorial Hospital's been vacant and unused for several years. It has become eyesore, infested with rodents and other pests. It's a public safety hazard and is hurting the property values of the residents of the Finn Haven area. The city has declared it a property a blighted area and in need of demolition and cleanup. I represent Ward-Wana, the City Council of TELCITY, and this blighted property is in the ward I represent. I fully support the city's effort to secure grant funding for the demolition of the building and cleanup of the site for future redevelopment. Thanks for your consideration. And I'll get you a copy or get you the original letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Well said. Oh, John's got something to say.
Somebody's calling him.
Somebody's calling one in. We'll take it.
I'm happy to comment if that's okay.
Jeff, this city attorney Jeff Hager.
I mentioned at the prior hearing we had on this, I was born in that hospital. My children were born in that hospital. And it's absolute shame that it has become the eyesore that it has become. It's a wonderful site overlooking the Ohio River. I believe it is in serious need of demolition, cleanup, restoration, and ideally future development. I support the idea one hundred percent. I think this is a well-focused effort. It is well-placed use of what city funds are involved. We also have an outside third party that is contributing the matching funds, so this is a win-win for TELCITY. It costs the taxpayers nothing. You can't ask for anything better than that.
Great comments.
That's a really good point to make. The city has partnered with a local nonprofit who is putting up the match. There's a match required at least ten percent, but this project goes above and beyond. So we are asking Oprah for five hundred thousand dollars and the match being provided by Rantel Inc. is one hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Her total project cost is six hundred thousand, six hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars to clear the site. And we've been through that building with owner permission and it is pretty devastating. It's also been surveyed for asbestos contamination and it's throughout the building. It's really unfortunate to see, I was born in that hospital, it's unfortunate to see such a large structure that was once a very lucky building go to ruins. But we do hope that the clearance project will allow for future development in that area. Finn Haven neighborhood is an old neighborhood and is kind of distant from other green spaces and anything else going on in like making TELCITY, I guess. So it's a, it's a good area for some future development.
And Leah, it's my understanding that if the grant is approved and the project proceeds, that the area will remain green space for at least five years. Is that correct?
That is correct. So Rantel has an option agreement in place with the current owner. They are not the current owner, but they have an option agreement in place with their current owner to purchase that property. And then after the grant is awarded, it will then be transferred at no cost to the city. Then after the clearance for five years, Oprah only allows for that area to be a green space. There are some other very particular instances where it could be something else, but it's essentially so that the area, if there were any audits or anything going, anything that might come up with the grant, it hasn't been turned into something else in the meantime. But it can be green space. That can include lighting, park benches, perhaps sidewalks. Those kinds of things obviously at the expense of the city at that time. After those five years, the city is free to develop it how they see fit, whether that be to sell it or to repurpose it into some type of public facility or could be, I don't know, anything from an amphitheater to a dog park to what have you.
Housing.
It's free rent. It's free rent. And it's my understanding that the city intends to work with the citizens of TELCITY to come up with a plan for that in the future.
What is the size of the area? I don't know if I've ever heard.
Sure. So the main parcel is just over six acres, six point four four two. And then the actual building is just under nine hundred, or sorry, ninety thousand thirty.
That's about six acres, the whole area.
Yeah. And it's important to point out what Leah had said that, you know, when the city, the five years will go faster than you think. When you start planning and looking into it, public input, you know, raising funds or whatever, it'll go faster than you think.
We don't have to wait five years to be planning.
No, exactly. You're not touching the dirt in that. So that's, some people get concerned, I think, and oh, green space, five years, that's waste. And well, it's going to take that long probably to get, to get it going.
That's true.
It will.
Better than what we got there now.
The application is being, will be submitted on October twentieth?
It's a two, yes. It's a two-part application process. So the proposal will be due the end of this week on the twentieth and then the application, the final process is due on December twenty-second.
Okay, and what?
And we should know February of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so that's going to be several more issues. Okay.
Yes. Mike Finley, is there anything you'd like to say? I mean, do you think it's a good idea, a bad idea? Would you love to see it cleaned up or?
Well, I can't think of any reason not to. I mean, it's such a, it has so much potential up there to just go to waste.
Yeah.
Certainly doing that right now, going to waste.
Steve Goodson, building and zoning? I mean, you can make some, you can sit there and just talk loud and I'm not gonna.
As Bill Purvis here, I guess, as a resident and as city building and zoning, thank you, City of TELCITY. Thank you, Region fifteen. We're partying together. It's been a long overdue project, but thank you. It'll be a blessing to see this thing go and even sit there for five years. Yes, it's going to be much better. So thank you, everyone that's involved in this project.
Thank you, Steve. Ron, you're never shy for a comment.
I know it. I've been writing my term.
I can see you on the edge of your seat, just ready to pounce up here.
I'm going to wing some notes real quick, but as far as that goes, no, I think it's a great thing, you know, get that all cleared out and everything. I wish we could hold on to any of those buildings because there's some really solid buildings up there, you know, for a future ID or something like that that might even help us out, you know, to save money on that grant and everything like that, you know. But I think there is a beautiful view up there. It's up here. I mean, it overlooks it.
Absolutely.
So I mean, that's really what people want to see. Okay, I got twenty-five years in Florida. I got over twenty-five years in Florida. People want to see beautiful view. Water is something that just releases that, okay? But, you know, we have the, that view up there for the tourism, you know, get people in here. We got the restaurants and everything to accommodate the tourism, you know. So I mean, I myself, I would love to see it somehow go along with the bike path. And I wish, uh, Calhoun, and I keep mugging them about it and everything like that, you know. But a nice bike path, you know, five or seven or eight miles, you know, a bike path, that's what we get, you know, people help lies and stuff like that, you know. But bike path overlooked, you know, just the future out there and everything. I mean, there's so much there. Rather than, oh, I went into it, you know, he'll leave, Lee, I went into it.
Don't, don't, don't admit that. Don't, don't. Stop recording.
I mean, I would be able to have Halloween up there. I mean, that is just spooky and everything. But no, I, I'm just saying there's a whole lot of great ideas. It could be there with that view and everything. It could really help out the town. That's my, I mean.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay. Lori, Ronnie, do you have any thoughts on the old hospital site? I'd love to hear from you if you do.
In the words of Sam Cooke, it's been a long time coming and it changes on down. I don't know what the exact how it's on those, but.
Yeah.
It's for all reasons that were read and all reasons that were said. It's been a long time coming and I think the people will need to get out and come here instead of sitting on the heat board at home because the writers at home aren't going to go anywhere. Like you said, you got to start planning now.
Yeah.
So sooner they come, the sooner they put their input in and whenever you talk about it.
Yeah.
The better it will be for everybody.
I agree.
You did all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori and Ronnie. No, it's, 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 it's good comments. I appreciate that. Andy, what we're doing, we're talking about the old hospital. It's kind of a blight clearance. We're in the part of that now. And so do you have any thoughts on the old hospital site, like as far as in support or not support of seeing it tore down and applying for the grants?
I'd love to see something there.
Yeah. It'd actually provide, you know, a service, electricity.
Something to use electricity?
You don't, not solar panels?
Yes, I think it's a beautiful location.
Yeah.
I've been up there a little bit. Obviously, I'd like to see something else go there. Uh, there may be some stipulation that it could be green space or so on.
Yeah, it does.
I think it could potentially be a prime location for something.
Just about anything, really. I mean, the sky's the limit. It's six acres almost and so Janice told me not to ask her. John, Janice, see I'm embarrassed. She's just, I knew I was going to get to her. Just thumbs up.
I know. I want to see it.
I know. Well, there you said something. That's all that matters.
That's why we have to really appreciate the partnership with Rantel.
Yeah. I'll just comment. Yeah. No, I'll just comment real quick. As mayor and lived in TELCITY my whole life, you know, I had, I went through the facility with permission, for real. Ron, for real. Wow. You really, you wouldn't recognize it as what it was. There was, we literally were in the basement at one point where the cafeteria was. You didn't know you were in the cafeteria. I was looking for it. It wasn't there because, and you know, you walked in, you saw the bank of elevators and the gift shop. There's just piles of rubble and it's bad. It definitely is an eyesore to the community. It's a black property. When you have that, that increases crime. It decreases property values. Those are things you don't want in any community. Looking forward to hopefully getting this grant and getting that cleaned up and making some great plans for the future for that site that benefit all of TELCITY and Perry County and the surrounding areas, so.
Other than that, also, Mary, it's a very big safety hazard.
Oh, yeah.
I remember the fire chief talking about somebody going up there setting a fire and his guys have to go up there and they got holes in the floors and all this stuff. But so besides it being a blight, it's a safety hazard for any of our departments that would have to respond to that. And then also, I'm sure we have had people that lived in there.
No, we've never had any of those, luckily.
Have you babies in there? Well, it's an opportunity for them, so don't.
No, don't, no. We've never had, yeah, don't bring that up, but no, we've never had. Don't give them ideas. We've not had that.
Safety hazard.
It is a safety hazard. My son is a volunteer fire person. A fireman was on duty that night and he went to the hospital fire and he told me that it was very, very lucky that somebody didn't fall through one of those holes and get seriously hurt. So it definitely is a safety hazard.
Gary, do you have any thoughts?
I just think it's going to be a great opportunity for the community. As I was talking to John, I mean, you know, the building, the area, you drop the level of it down ten or twelve feet, open up a much larger area there.
Yeah, you gain acreage potentially. Connie, clerk treasurer?
I just echo everything that everybody else said. I mean, I don't, I totally agree. It needs, something needs to be done up there. And I think this is the great opportunity for us to be able to do that.
Thank you. Gerald, as a former council member for twenty-plus years, board of works member for four years, lived and lived in your whole life, what are your thoughts on the old hospital site and trying to obtain the grants to see it demolished?
I think it's a good idea because it's a disaster. People owned that one in there and took out what they could, sold the rest and walked away. We don't own that. So if we can get a grant, that would be correct. It doesn't cost the city anything. It would be, or match, I don't know.
The match is being covered by a donor.
That's right.
Private donor. So yeah, it's, it's not literally costing us taxpayers, you know, TELCITY. I get it to grant, it's taxpayer money, just to grow a tree somewhere. But it's going to be awarded somewhere in Indiana. I'd rather it come to TELCITY than, you know, other communities. We kind of selfishly want it, of course, but yeah.
We need to go for it.
Okay. Philip, do you want to comment? We're having kind of a public hearing in the old hospital. Region fifteen's working to apply for a grant to tear it down. Any thoughts as far as the police department goes and why it should be tore down or why it shouldn't be and?
It is kind of sore-eyed, but we've also had problems of people going in there and stripping off the copper and stuff. We've had some issues with that.
Vandals?
Yes. And I mean, I'm assuming it's probably not necessarily safe. It's probably not available anything, so it probably needs to be.
Okay. Thank you. Al, if you want to say anything about the hospital, do you want to see it tore down or do you want to see it stay? There you go. Why?
Why?
Yeah. We're having a blight clearance. I'm just putting you on the spot. I'm picking on you.
I'm looking.
There you go. There you go. That works. She just needs a little blurb to put in her application and that counts. So if there are no other comments to come before the hearing, Leah, there's nothing else, right, other than that?
I would advise for all those listening at home, please do not go into the building.
Yes.
I wish I had it twice. It is full of asbestos, which we know is a known cause of mesothelioma and other health issues. And I would just hate to know that anyone was exposed actively because of it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, do not go in there, please. There's, if you really want to see it.
There is YouTube video.
There's a YouTube video that somebody went in and took. You can watch that from the safety of your home.
It's a long video. He was very thorough.
Very thorough. I would, if you're going to want to get, if you're curious, I would watch that.
I agree.
For safety, yeah.
But thank you all for your comments and that's helped strengthen the application. We really appreciate it. And we will be having another one in, at the regular monthly meeting in December. And if you or anyone you know would like to attend that one as well, we'd love to have you again and hear those comments.
All right. Let me finish this real quick. I think we can consider the hearing closed.
I think so.
That's right. Sorry, there you go. All right. The hearing is now closed on that, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is the adoption of the twenty twenty-four budgets and salaries. We're going to start first with the salary side of it. So ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-three. This is part of the salary ordinance on it. And I'll just read the title part and the sections of it. An ordinance of the City of TELCITY, Indiana, adopting and establishing the twenty twenty-four annual salary distribution for elected officials from the following funds, general water, wastewater, trash collection, electric. Therefore be ordained by the TELCITY Common Council. Section one, annual salaries of the mayor, clerk treasurer, members of the common council in the, for the calendar year are appropriate and payable for the purpose as here or after provided to with. And it lists all those. Section two, annual salary of the mayor, clerk treasurer, that be paid at twenty-six installments, payable at each bi-weekly payroll. The first of each installment of the payroll is January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Annual salaries of the council herein provided shall be paid in monthly installments, payable at the last payroll of each month. And the first such installments being payable, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, for services rendered. Section three, this ordinance shall be ineffective as to the salaries provided herein on and after January first, twenty twenty-four, presented by me to the common council, City of TELCITY, Indiana, the sixteenth day of October twenty-three at the hour of five twenty-two o'clock PM. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only?
What was the ordinance number of them there?
One dash twenty twenty-three.
One dash twenty twenty-three.
Yes. The reason it's that way, they actually don't go in with our ordinance codification. She files it differently.
I'll make a motion to suspend rules.
Second, third reading by title?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, second it.
Motion made by John, seconded by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading, ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of TELCITY, Indiana, adopting the establishment of the twenty twenty-four annual salary distribution for elected officials from the following funds, general water, wastewater, trash collection, and electric. Third reading, ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of TELCITY, Indiana, adopting and establishing the twenty twenty-four annual salary distribution for elected officials from the following funds, general water, wastewater, trash collection, and electric. Counsel, if there's a first, second, third reading of ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-three, is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I know I'm reading this fast and if you want me to slow down so you all can hear it, I'd be glad to. There's just a lot to read, this next one. All right. Ordinance number two dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the City of TELCITY, Indiana, adopting and establishing the twenty twenty-four annual salaries, wages, fringe benefits, appointed city officials and employees. Here therefore be ordained by the common council. Section one, that the calendar year for the following salaries, wages, and fringe benefits are established for the following officials and position. And it goes through all the positions there. Section one A, the mayor receive the following salary allowance. Section two, the building inspector receive the following salary allowance. Section three, the payroll officers of the TELCITY Police Department will be entitled to the following longevity pay increases based on the first-class patrol officer's salary. Section two A, dispatcher's communications records coordinator, communications records clerk of the TELCITY Police Department will be entitled to the following longevity pay increases based on the dispatcher's salary. Section two B, the TELCITY, or the police department, rank increases. If an officer has obtained the rank of chief, assistant chief, lieutenant, sergeant, corporal, that officer will be compensated by a thousand dollar maximum annually for as long as the rank is retained. Section two C, the police department incentives. If an officer, dispatcher, communications records coordinator, or communications records clerk has earned a credential or designation, that employee's salary will be compensated by a thousand dollars maximum annually for as long as the credential or designation is retained. Section two D, the TELCITY Police Department personnel receive the following clothing allowance, holiday pay, officer's salary allowance for the calendar year. Section two E, TELCITY Police Department Reserve Division will receive the following compensation based on these criterias. Section two F, the patrol officers of the TELCITY Police Department work in traffic patrol details under the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute grants shall be paid an hourly rate equal to their current overtime rate less holidays longevity incentive as per Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. Section three, the TELCITY Volunteer Fire Department personnel receives full-time reserve volunteer firefighters will receive the following clothing and automobile allowance for the calendar year. Section four, employees other than the police and fire who choose to receive furnished uniforms will receive an annual allowance of three hundred and fifty dollars purchased for work-appropriate attire. Section five, a two-hour minimum overpay rate, one and a half, excuse me, time and one half, will be paid by the designated hourly employee per call-out. Time work following a two-hour minimum will also be paid at the overtime hourly rate. Section six, at any, or any employee deemed necessary by the department head to operate equipment who has a January, as of January first, twenty twenty-three, hold a valid commercial driver's license, CDL, has provided all paperwork to the City of TELCITY clerk treasurer, will receive a one dollar an hour increase, or one dollar an hour in their pre, their per-hour wage. An employee after this date who obtains their commercial driver's license, CDL, and has provided all the paperwork to the City of TELCITY clerk treasurer, receive a dollar increase in their per-hour wages starting with the next payroll cycle. A salary, any salaried employee who has a commercial driver's license or obtains one will receive the one dollar increase in pay based on their current hourly rate. It is employee's responsibility to keep all CDL information up to date with the clerk treasurer. Any employee who loses a CDL license will lose the one dollar per hour raise beginning the date the license is terminated. This section went into effect June twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The one dollar per hour will not be taken into consideration when calculating any salary increases. Section seven, the salary of the city attorney is paid on a monthly basis. Section eight, this ordinance shall be effective as to the salaries, wages, and fringe benefits provided herein on and after January first, twenty twenty-four. Passed and adopted by the common council of the City of TELCITY the sixteenth day of October, twenty twenty-three. Counsel, you've had the first reading of ordinance number two dash twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to read the title by second, third reading only? Yeah, you got what I mean. I said that backwards, but yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second reading, ordinance number two dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of TELCITY, Indiana, adopting and establishing the twenty twenty-four annual salaries, wages, and fringe benefits of appointed city officials and employees. Third reading, ordinance number two dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of TELCITY, Indiana, adopting and establishing the twenty twenty-four annual salaries, wages, and fringe benefits of appointed city officials and employees. Counsel, you've had the first, second, third reading of ordinance number two dash twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Do you want me to take one for you?
Yeah, I'm reading it fast enough. I think you're reading too slow. You take the short, yeah, you take this one. It's a little bit longer. Go for it. It's two dash, or three dash twenty twenty-three. That's your ordinance number.
Ordinance number two dash twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three.
Sorry.
An ordinance of the City of TELCITY, Indiana, adopting and establishing the twenty twenty-four salaries and wages of the city officials and employees appropriated from utility funds. Therefore be it ordained by the TELCITY Common Council. Section one, that for the calendar year, the following salaries and wages are appropriated for the city-appointed officials and positions. And, and then we have a graph that shows all of those salaries. Section two, seasonal personnel of water, wastewater, stormwater, and trash departments. Section three, a two-hour minimum overtime pay rate, time and one, time and one half will be paid to the designated hourly employee per call-out. Time work following the two-hour minimum will also be paid at the overtime rate. Section four, water plant weekend operators will be paid for four hours at a time and one and a half on both Saturday and Sunday. Section five, wastewater weekend on-call operators will be paid for eight hours at time and one half on both Saturday and Sunday. Section six, employees who choose not to receive furnished uniforms will receive an annual allowance of three hundred and fifty dollars for purchase of work-appropriate attire. Section seven, the wastewater superintendent will receive the following salary allowance for the calendar year. Section eight, any employee deemed necessary by the department head to operate equipment who has of January first, twenty twenty-three, holds a valid commercial driver's license and has provided all paperwork. and has provided all paperwork to the City of Tel City clerk treasurer, will receive a one dollar increase in their per, per hour wage. Any employee after this date who obtains their commercial driver's license and provides all paperwork to the City of Tel City clerk treasurer, will receive a one dollar increase in their per hour wage, starting with the next payroll cycle. Any salaried employee who has a commercial driver's license or obtains one will also receive the one dollar per hour increase in pay based on their current hourly rate. It is the employee's responsibility to keep all CDL information up to date with the clerk treasurer. Any employee who loses a CDL license will lose the one dollar per hour raise beginning on the date the license is terminated. This section went into effect on June twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The one dollar per hour will not be taken into consideration when calculating any salary increase. Section nine, the salary of the city attorney is paid on a monthly basis. Section ten, this ordinance shall be in effect as to the salaries, wages, and fringe benefits provided herein on or after January first, twenty twenty-four. Passed and adopted by the common council of the City of Tel City, the sixteenth day of October, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Counsel, you've had the first reading of ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-three, is there a motion to suspend the rules for second and third reading by title only?
So moved.
Motion made by John, is there a second?
Sir.
All right. I was like, am I gonna die, flag of motion? Seconded by Larry, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Please read second, third reading of ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-three by title only.
Second reading, ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the twenty twenty-four salaries and wages of the city officials and employees appropriated from utility funds. Third reading, ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Tel City, Indiana, adopting and establishing the twenty twenty-four salaries and wages of the city officials and employees appropriated from utility funds.
Okay. Counsel, you've had the first, second, third reading now of ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Now Connie gets to do a little bit.
I don't read near as fast as you do, though.
I can read it fast, but.
Do you wanna read it?
I'm here to do it if you need it.
Jeff, do you wanna just read this one?
Well, what's this one?
You get the, what's the number?
I'm not as fast as you.
This one doesn't, this one doesn't have a number, I think she said.
No, it does not.
Okay. So I'll, I'll take it.
So just start there.
It's, it's the tax rate ordinance.
Yes.
Ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates.